I'd like to call this meeting over. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can please have roll call?
Of course. Councilmember Shaker.
Here.
Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember McCafferty.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Vice Mayor Grineal.
Here.
Mayor Miller.
Here.
And our town attorney is present.
All right. Introductions, presentations, proclamations to a presentation of certificates of appreciation to members of the general plan steering committee.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Lori Langbury, your Development Services Director. It is my honor to be able to recognize the steering committee that worked tirelessly on the general plan. We had fourteen members that were appointed by council with varying degrees of participation, and you pick busy people, and so busy people are not always available. And so tonight, we don't have all of the busiest of the busy, but we do have a number of them that we'd like to recognize tonight. So I'm gonna list everyone that was on the committee, and then the ones that are here will come forward when I share their name. Okay, we'll see. Is that on? Awesome. Larry Aldridge. So you guys come up when I call your name. Larry was a very busy and active person, and still is. As you probably know, the steering committee has turned into ambassadors because staff is not allowed to promote the plan or say anything positive about the plan, because then it looks like we're promoting it, and state law doesn't let us do that. So the steering committee is acting as that promotion piece to try and get information out to the community about the plan, the benefits of this plan, and so they're reaching out to the community between now and the election, which is in November. Donna Armstrong, who is out of town. Dean Echols. Rachel Furno. You graduated from steering committee to ambassador. There you go. Thank you so much. Dina Fright, who is at a wedding. John Ginn. Andrew Grineal. Larry Holt. And Larry will also be taking Kathy Middlestead's two-fer. It's a two-fer.
Come on, Larry.
Mike O'Connor, Janelle Scherer. I know that you're here. So when you see these folks at different events, go up to them and talk to them. Let them share with you about the plan. There you go. Thank you. Appreciate you so much. Andrea Smith, and Jeff Vanwell, oh, and Lori Weisnen. So we have a great group. Thank you for appointing a very hardworking committee for this general plan.
Thank you to all of our volunteer helpers there. Item B, presentation update from Thomas Stoltz, Yavapai Regional Transit Manager. I wasn't sure if you was a coordinator, president, or...
I'm not sure some days either.
But it says manager there.
I'm not sure myself. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'd like to start out by introducing a couple members of Simpo who we have worked with throughout the years. That's Central Yavapai Metropolitan Planning Organization. I'd like to introduce Vinnie and Michael. Are you coming up or just gonna wait? Come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thank you for allowing us to crash the party. And with titles being tossed around, I like ambassador. That sounds like a great title. But officially, I am the Executive Director of the Central Yavapai Metropolitan Planning Organization, or Simpo for short. Would like to acknowledge our chairman, who is Yavapai County Supervisor Craig Brown. He's here with us this evening, and we're here to join in the message about Yavapai Regional Transit. This year, Simpo celebrates twenty years, and we also acknowledge Councilman Tom Armstrong, who sits on the Simpo Executive Board. But this twenty-year milestone is very big for us. We're very excited that this year, Simpo has made a priority to work with the state legislature to bring thirteen million dollars to improve Highway eighty-nine between Three North and Five North. So I really hope you support Councilman Armstrong, Supervisor Brown, in our effort in working with Senator Bennett, Representative Winn, and Representative Bliss to bring that money to the community. Now, to focus on the conversation at hand, in those twenty years, a major part of our conversation has been all modes of transportation, including public transit. I believe Yavapai Regional Transit has been around almost a decade, if not more, and that's been a very significant part to what Simpo has promoted. Much like we're gonna go after that thirteen million to improve the highway capacity and safety, we know there's other modes of transportation. So for the last ten years, we've worked side by side with Ron and Sheri, Tom, and all the staff that they've had there over the years to try and make this as sustainable, as successful as needed. We recognize that, I believe, their ridership is around fifteen thousand, primarily in the community of Chino Valley. We're proud to announce that the town of Prescott Valley has started their own transit system, and it's very similar to those lines. So thirty thousand riders are being served between Yavapai Regional Transit and Yavoline. So I just wanted to offer our support to what's happening with YRT. We look forward to your partnership in that, and I wanted to also introduce our newest staff member. Some of you recognize Michael Lamar. He's the recent city manager for the city of Prescott. He was servicing there for the last six, seven years, and he just saw the excitement and the fun we're having at Simpo. So he joined us, and I'd like to introduce him and give him a moment of his new responsibility of developing partnerships for YRT and others in the region. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vinnie.
Mayor Jack and Council. I feel like I should complain about something. This is like the very... I've never been on this side of the day. It's kind of funny. But I'm not gonna complain. I'm happy to be here. This is a tremendous community, and I'm really here to help out Tom and YRT make the case for not just what they're doing, but for a regional transit system for this area, working in conjunction with Simpo and Yavoline. I think there's a real opportunity that a lot of people are doing a little good work in silos that our organization can help facilitate a dialogue and bring people together to maybe try to make the regional transit concept work for whole central Yavapai County. When you hear some of the statistics, it's kind of shocking. I do have familiarity with this region, and I am shocked about how many people are using their service and how many people are already using Yavoline over in Prescott Valley. So I'm excited to try to facilitate some partnerships and collaborations and bring people together. So, happy to be here.
Thank you, Mike.
And I guess I'll introduce Tom. Come on up.
Okay, first slide here. We are a 501(c)(3) corporation. We're governed by the American Disabilities Act. We are a qualifying charitable organization. Also, we are funded by the FTA. We're a fifty-three-eleven rural transportation grant recipient. We're required to provide services in a rural area. Rural areas are defined by a population of less than fifty thousand. We provide over seventy-three percent of our rides beginning or ending in rural areas, and that seventy-three percent is mainly coming from Chino Valley. We're servicing residents within Chino Valley, Prescott, and to Prescott Valley. We only go to Prescott Valley one day a week. We go on Wednesdays. And we are the only public transportation system serving the tri-city area. We've been based in Chino Valley for over ten years. We are run by myself and my operations manager, who is in the audience tonight, Bill Mitchell. Bill's been with us since the very beginning, and we currently have nine drivers. We are fully staffed. This is our board of directors. It's a five-member board. I also have a few of my board members in the audience this evening. Anybody who knows any of these individuals know that they're very experienced, and they've helped us a lot. I enjoy working with them, and how many managers can say they enjoy working with their board of directors? I can. Okay, who's riding? Seventy-three percent of riders, which you've heard a few times before, are Chino Valley residents. In 2021, that represented nine thousand one hundred ninety-six people out of twelve thousand five hundred ninety-seven transports. In 2022, that represented ten thousand six hundred and sixty-three people from Chino Valley, and that was out of fourteen thousand six oh eight. As Vinnie had mentioned previously, we are planning on exceeding fifteen thousand riders this year, and we are on track to do that. We serve seniors, those of low income, and people with disabilities. All of our buses have wheelchair lifts, bike racks. All of our drivers are uniformed and fully trained. Where do we go? Well, we take our riders to medical appointments, grocery and household stores, socialization, the Prescott Courthouse, which we always hope is a positive thing, workplaces, and the Veterans Administration, and DNS on Wednesdays only, Department of Economic Services in Prescott Valley. Route served. Okay, Chino Valley. You probably have all seen our buses around Chino Valley. We make eleven trips a day, and to Prescott, five days a week, always Monday through Friday. And as previously mentioned, Prescott Valley, one day a week on Wednesday. Deviations are available for those who cannot make one of our stops. With twenty-four hours' notice, each bus is allowed one-quarter mile off of the fixed route to pick up passengers that have difficulty getting to one of our stops. The last item mentioned here is the Paulden Plunge. I'm happy to announce to the council that we had a record Paulden Plunge participation. We had four hundred and eleven rides that were provided over roughly a seven-week period. Okay, printed maps and timetables. I have given the council some of those for you to take a look at at your leisure. There are some on the outside table for anybody who would like to get a printed map and timetable schedule. They're available on all of our buses in approximately twenty-five locations around the tri-city area, like the Chamber of Commerce, library, the college, et cetera. And they also are available on the YRT website. All rides are currently free until October one of 2023. This was a result of us getting some additional financing through the CARES Act, and our board has voted to continue free rides till October first of 2023, which is the start of our fiscal year. This is a chart that demonstrates the growth that we've seen. Our overhead is, of course, driver salaries, administrative overhead, insurance, multiple insurances, I might add, bus maintenance, and cost of gas, the last two being the most significant that we faced this particular year. As you can see, we've had steady growth, and in our last fiscal year, we had fourteen thousand six hundred and eight riders. And again, this year, we're on target to do fifteen thousand five hundred. That's the end of that show. Any questions from the council at this point, or Mr. Mayor?
Do the veterans still ride free?
Yes, the veterans will always ride free. The veterans have always ridden free.
How about this side? No questions, sir.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and Council. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
All right, item two C, announcement of promotion of Josh McIntyre from lieutenant to deputy chief with the Chino Valley Police Department.
He gets to do all the talking tonight. Well, Mayor and Council, I'm sure you saw in your biweekly update from the manager this week that we completed our testing process and promotional process for deputy chief. I'm very proud to announce Josh McIntyre was promoted from lieutenant to deputy chief, and he's got a few words to say, and I'll go sit with mom and dad.
Thank you, Chief. I was told to keep it short, because obviously I like talking.
We appreciate that.
There's only thirty-seven slides, and it's about fifteen minutes long, but... No, I just have some quick comments. Mayor, council members, I am extremely honored and humbled by being selected... That's the first time I ever did that. To fulfill the role of deputy chief of police, I am excited to have the opportunity to continue working alongside the dedicated men and women of the Chino Valley Police Department to ensure the citizens of our great town are safe and receive the exceptional service they deserve. As it says in our mission statement, "Serving the citizens of Chino Valley is a privilege, not a right, and our citizens are the most important people in our department." I will work tirelessly to maintain the strong bond we have with our community and focus on continuing to earn their trust and support daily. In closing, I am thankful for the outpouring of support that I've always received from everyone, especially my family, who has always shown great understanding of my passion for serving others. Thank you. And as you can tell, it means a lot to me, so...
Stay there.
I did not agree with that, okay?
What we do is we take one group shop, and then we photo shop whoever's different.
All right, congratulations, Josh. Call to the public, ma'am.
Call to the public is an opportunity for the public to address the council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the council that is not on the agenda. Public comment is at the discretion of the council and not required by law. Individuals are limited to speak for three minutes. Yielding of time will not be permitted. The total time for call to the public may be up to thirty minutes per meeting. Council action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date, or responding to criticism. Disrespectful behavior will not be tolerated. This includes loud outbursts, profanity, and disruptive discussions amongst our audience. I did not have any comment cards submitted, Mayor.
No comments, callers. So nobody want to talk? Okay, we'll move on. Current event summaries and reports. I have nothing. How about over here to my left? Nope. Am I right?
Well, we have territorial days coming up.
We do.
Is Cindy gonna talk on that? Okay. I have nothing.
All right, then we'll go on over to the town manager.
Well, as Councilmember Perkins said, Mayor, council members, we do have our Territorial Days Weekend Event coming up. I want to invite everyone to come out, and before I go into what we have going on, I want to thank the staff that has been working so hard to pull this event off. They are really working to make this our signature event, as council has talked about us doing. Not only our staff, but we have some partners, and I don't know if I'll get them all, but the Nine Eleven Foundation, the Lions, the Lionesses, Women's Community Network. So just a lot of people coming in together to make this a great event for our town. So we're gonna start off on Friday, September first, at three-thirty with our chili cook-off, and then we're gonna have some live music that evening with the band Mischief. The next day, Saturday, September second, we start off with the Pancake Breakfast at six AM. There's a ten-k-and-two-mile walk and run. Of course, we're gonna have vendors and music during the day, but at nine-fifteen will be our Territorial Days Parade, and I know that staff has been working eagerly with community members to make this even bigger and better parade this year. And then we finish off with our FFA corn dinner, and if you haven't been to that, you have to go. It's really fantastic. All the corn you can eat, so everyone come out to that. And then this year, we added another day, so Sunday, September third, we are going to have...
You forgot fireworks.
I'm not there yet.
Never mind, forget it.
I won't forget, Mayor. At ten AM, we have the car show, and then at three, we have a free swim at the pool. That will be the last day of our pool going on, so we're having a free swim for everyone to come out and cool off before they get to the other festivities, and we finish off with our fireworks show at seven-thirty PM. So everyone come out, have a good time, and enjoy your friends and family.
Fireworks.
There's the fireworks, yeah.
Can we get fireworks every night? I think that'd be awesome.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Consent agenda. Would anyone wish to remove any item from the consent agenda?
Five A.
Five A? Okay, anything else? Nothing? Okay, we're entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. We approve consent agenda five, B, C, D, and E.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Bob, going back to consideration and possible action to award a professional service agreement to Civil Tech Engineering in the amount of fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Okay. We just got a contract with Civil Tech for four hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars for capital improvement. So why are we giving them another fifty-eight thousand dollars just to do survey?
Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of council. Councilmember Shaker, the four hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollar contract was for the Integrated Water Master Plan. That process is a year-long process that develops a master plan for the water, sewer, stormwater systems for the town. This contract is for the engineering and design of the Road One East improvements from Juniper Drive up to Perkinsville to be constructed next year. They're separate contracts and separate scopes.
But they're both under capital improvement.
Well, we have lots of capital improvement projects going on. The police department was a capital improvement project. The Integrated Water Master Plan develops a capital improvement plan, but it is a study. But this is for the design of next year's street improvements, part of the capital improvement plan. I hope that helps.
I understand it's two different projects, but both of them are listed as capital improvement, and why couldn't CivTech Engineer do the street Juniper and Perkinsville?
Well, they are one of our on-call engineers, and that is their scope and fee to design that particular street. The Integrated Water Master Plan does not include any street construction design services in the scope of that study. It's a separate study. But this is for a design of a particular construction project.
Okay.
I hope that helps clarify that a little bit.
Any other questions on this, where he's up here? Thank you, Frank. All right, we need a motion for five A, please.
Make a motion. We approve five A, consideration and possible action to award professional service agreement to Civil Tech Engineering in the amount of fifty-eight thousand eight thirty-two.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're on to six. A, consideration and possible action to approve the intergovernmental mental service agreement with the Chino Valley Unified School District for our school resource officer. For school, excuse me, a school resource officer. Who's doing this one?
Send the newbie up there.
Mayor and Council, I'll let the deputy chief kind of explain, because he was in more meetings with the school district, and we also have John Shoal and Cindy Daniels here from the school district. And Cindy actually wrote the grant, so if you have specific questions, she's probably the best person to answer those.
So this year, the school district obtained a grant for two school resource officers. And basically, what the agreement is, is the school district will be paying the salary of the school resource officer while they're working at the school through the school year. And basically, the verbiage, Lieutenant Chapman pretty much... They wrote the grant, so they did a great job with it.
So right before the start of school and until the end of school, this grant will cover for, it was for two police officers. One of them is going to be a reserve police officer, and one is a full-time police officer. It will pay for their salary, and the town will be responsible for about two-hundred-and-thirty hours during the summer that we are responsible for the salary.
Okay.
Do we know who they are?
I don't know. Can you tell us who you are first?
Sure. I'm Cindy Daniels. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Chino Valley Unified School District.
Okay, thank you. Nice to meet you.
So, nice to meet you too, Mayor, Council. So we wrote this grant. The SRO grant program was expanded by, under Governor Ducey's leadership, and included opportunities for districts to apply for additional resource officers. In the past, the town of Chino Valley, Chino Valley PD, has provided an officer to the district. The officer's typically been housed at Heritage Middle School and is on call for all of our schools. The Chino Valley High School had a school safety personnel, a retired officer, who we had on staff. As you are aware, incidences across the United States that occur on school campuses have increased over the last few decades, and the school district is moving forward with a comprehensive safety plan for all our campuses. Some of the things that you might note will be like the additional fencing that you've seen, single-point-of-entry, training for our school staff, cooperating, professional development from Chino Valley PD for our staff for things like Stop the Bleed training and other things like that. So we decided to pursue the first round of grants three years ago to provide school counselors in two of our schools, sort of as a front end, to help students who are struggling with maybe mental health issues, family issues, or things to try to prevent criminal activity on our campuses. We felt like that's been a successful program, but we also wanted a more, a uniform presence on our campuses to provide a sense of security for our parents, as well as our students. So I wrote this grant. It's a three-year award. Typically, as long as we maintain all of the provisions of the grant, which includes training for officers, training for school administrators, district personnel, fiscal responsibility, then the grant can be renewed for an additional three years. So this was a way, one of the things that had come up was there won't be enough officers, sworn officers, all over the state of Arizona to cover all of the positions that school districts were requesting. So they did make some changes in the SRO grant, which allowed for us to use reserve officers and not just full-time sworn officers on the campus. So what we have done, we have a reserve officer who is your firearms training instructor, Matt Gronick at Del Rio School, and Matt is the reserve officer. We are actually paying his salary directly, and we're buying purchase services from the town of Chino Valley, Chino Valley PD, for Officer Josh Noden for Chino Valley High School. We have armed security on all four of our campuses now. We have a retired officer who's our own district employee at Territorial, and we have the officer that you guys are still continuing to provide, Hector Torres, at... And we have the officer that you guys are still continuing to provide Hector Torres at Heritage Middle School. So this provides armed security on each of our campuses in addition to other things that we're doing like perimeter fencing, like, um. Uh, gate controls for bus lane activation, things like security cameras and partnerships with YCSO. For panic button cameras on our campuses. So it's a comprehensive safety plan. We have a district safety committee who's overseeing this. And. What else do you want to know?
Let's ask. Any questions?
My grandma said I was vaccinated with a record player needle.
Any questions over here, am I right? How about over here?
Just one for the chief. Is this contract similar to the ones we had in the previous years? Or arrangements?
Yes, sir. We, we had them prior and the, um, they expired a number of years ago and the department has applied numerous times and we've not received the grants. But, uh, Ms. Daniels is a much better grant writer, so she was able to get, but it's, it's very similar. It's, uh, federal money that flows through the state and then flows to the district.
And I understand your practice, you, it's a last resort, but does it still give you flexibility should you need to, to pull the officer for a day or for a few hours for other duties?
Uh, Officer Torres, we can, uh, use if we need be. The other officer assigned to the high school would just be there unless, you know, if all heck breaks loose. And the zombie apocalypse happens and yes, we could, could grab him, but other than that, he will be on the school campuses.
Alright, nothing else?
The difference is in this fiscal allocation is this was state money from, um, a fund, an appropriation fund. That Governor Ducey established. And so this one isn't flow through federal money. This is actually state money. So this one's a little bit different this time and we have, um, good commitment from Governor Hobbs that this will continue.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. You entertain a motion?
Make a motion. We approve the intergovernmental service agreement with the Chino Valley Unified School District for a school resource officer.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? Oh, motion carries. I know my tongue hung up. I didn't go to Chino schools, that's why I talked about it. If I did, I'd have been better. Item six B, consideration possible action to approve the cooperative purchasing agreement with Modular Solutions LTD.
Thank you, mayor and council. Uh, as you know, the streets department, we've been working on finding a new home for them. We've, should have been out of the building that the equestrian folks are occupying, I think, two years ago now. So we've been struggling with this mainly because of the, the prices involved. It is very expensive. Even for, for modular buildings. Um, but the best solution we found is to, to go on this cooperative purchase with the state bid. And this is the unit we've got. I think in our budget discussions, I mentioned that it may not be, uh, two units wide. It actually is two units wide. So I wanna correct that a little bit, but it's a twenty-four by fifty building. Uh, we added two restrooms in there and office space for the guys, uh, and hopefully gals. When, if we hire some, so, um, but this would piggyback on the state bid is what we're doing here to try and purchase this unit. Any questions or?
Any questions over here?
You got all your furniture you need?
No, we, we did budget four hundred thousand for this item, so the rest of it will be for site prep and furnishing and. Uh, connecting utilities. If we, uh, get lucky and can work on moving some of those old modulators. We have septic and power hookups right there. Uh, we're, we've just got some, uh, asbestos issues to deal with on those. And trying our best to work through them with those old buildings, so.
Alright, nothing else. Thank you, Frank. Will entertain a motion?
Make a motion. We approve the cooperative purchase agreement with Modular Solutions LTD for an amount not to exceed three hundred fourteen thousand four ninety-five. Fifty-five cents.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six C. Public hearing, consideration and possible action to approve a conditional use permit for Storit, Arizona.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, members of council. Will Denji, your assistant director with the town of Chino Valley. As read, this is a requested conditional use permit for Storit Mini Storage. Uh, this item went before the commission earlier this month. It received a recommendation of approval from them. The applicant is in attendance this evening, so if you have any questions for her, she will be happy to answer them. So to just briefly, um, give you the overview, the subject property is located on the east side of State Route eighty-nine, north of two north. Kind of sandwiched in between Mary's Furniture and Chino Rentals. Uh, to the east you have, or excuse me, to the west you have Primrose and then the existing Storit Mini Storage Facility. Uh, this is a little bit more than an expansion for them. This is a pretty new, um, brand-new construction, brand-new, uh, completely different than what's currently existing. On the west side of this, um, and then to the south, you do have Chino Rentals, Sonic, Burger King, Walgreens, Safeway. Uh, currently, the property is zoned commercial light within the commercial light zoning district with a conditional use permit. They are allowed to. Um, operate a mini storage business. Went backwards, excuse me. So something a little special about this property is that within the twenty-fourteen general plan, it falls within what's called a potential community core. Within those cores, um, the general plan specifically calls out for special things like mixed use or unique architecture style. So in order to. Adhere to those standards, they are proposing, um, to construct a mini storage facility over two phases. Phase one will begin on the west side, phase two will conclude on the east. Phase one, uh, where it starts to, uh, adhere to the general plan. Is that it is, they're providing or constructing a commercial flex office space at the westernmost portion of the property. As indicated here, this space will not be utilized by store. It'll be lease space for incubator space for businesses, things like that. There'll be four units. Um, the elevation for the building is down here on the left-hand side. Four units, common bathroom for all four, uh, roughly five hundred square feet per unit. Uh, as you work your way east, you'll work into the storied office, which is approximately nine hundred square feet. That's where the operations for the remainder of the facility will be housed. Uh, and then as you continue further east. You'll get into the storage, uh, units themselves. Phase one will have approximately sixty-three thousand square feet of storage. And phase two will be fifty-two thousand square feet of storage. The entire proposal or development will be completely landscaped a hundred percent around the property perimeter, which exceeds cap, uh, current code requirements. In between the landscaping and the buildings, you'll have a concrete masonery unit wall, uh, that'll serve for screening and security purposes. The final staple in this is that the town or the general plan calls for a unique architecture style, something that's not truly traditional to Chino. Which in some cases is just a metal building on the highway. This case, it's a true brick and mortar that has some different roof pitches. Um, kind of more in tune with the modern style of that, of the police station. So with those items, uh, staff found that this item complies with the twenty-fourteen general plan. So with that, staff is recommending that you hold a public hearing and then approve the conditional use permit for Storit with the conditions of approval found in attachment A. And we'll go ahead and open it up for questions and discussion.
Alright, any questions on this side for the staff?
Oh, I just, see, I just asked him if he could pull up attachment A. Well, the, um. Multi-use, what did you call it, multi-flex?
That's like a flex office space.
Okay, will that be done in phase one at the beginning? That's all I have.
How about over here? Yes, sir.
Do we have, will any kind of feel for what the present demand is for mini storage? I mean, we've got quite a few and people selling sheds besides them and.
So, uh, the town personally has not done, uh, a study on this, but we've had several entities come in, request record, records requests. For, um, unit demand, how many projects we have, how many proposals. Uh, and typically we, they'll come in, do that study, and then we'll see a pre-application for a storage facility. Um, within the next month or two. So I, I think we're gonna hit a kind of a terminal point here before shortly, I would think. Um, because we currently have one under construction right now at four and a half south. Um, and then there's, there's a couple others in the, in the, just initial stages. Um, but I, I think we're pretty close, uh, still meeting the demand of the area.
Okay, did the planning and zoning commission address those issues in their determination of sending it to us for approval?
The, to determine the demand?
It was not brought up at planning and zoning, any sort of demand for units?
It was discussed, but as far as any hard numbers or anything like that, no.
Okay, thank you.
Any neighbor comments, concerns?
We had one letter that was submitted to staff and it was regarding a code case off of one west. Um, you're probably familiar, sorry, excuse me, one east, right across the street from the school. Um, they were under the impression that this was going, that property was going to be the mini storage development. That is not the case. This property, a completely different property. You can actually kind of see it here, so here's, um, the school here, the property that they were concerned about.
Anything, Sherri?
Hey, Will, uh, the parking at the multi, or the, what'd you call the multi-flex or?
Flex area office, you know.
What kind of parking and turnaround do we have there?
It's small, though. They'll have to do with, um, a back out, three-point turn-in. Um, but it's adequate for, uh, very low use. You're probably within five hundred square feet. They do have a, I don't have it on here, the back of the building is gonna be a bay door. So you're, you're likely gonna see somebody that might do window tenting there for a vehicle, just one very, very low-impact traffic.
Anything else for staff?
Uh, Olson's was given five years to have their, I mean, the storage in front of Olson's. They were given five years to complete?
I believe that is correct.
Do we have the same thing as this?
Yes, it's in place.
On this one, it is not, yeah, if that is something council would like to add, you absolutely have the prerogative.
Yeah, we need to add that.
Uh, okay.
I'm sorry, I thought I read it.
Will, what is the highest, I'll, I'm, forgive my eyesight, I can't read the numbers. Yeah.
I wanna say that says twenty-three.
So with the project in front of Olson's, the commercial component on that was in the second phase, not the first phase. In this project, which is why we put a time limit on it, on this project, the commercial or the retail office piece is in the first phase. So we know that it's going to be built before we get the rest of it. The other project started with storage units. And then we put a time limit on it to ensure that they would give us the commercial piece in the front.
We're, we're talking about a time limit just to start on the project. Just to get the project done, yeah.
Yeah, we do, I don't think we wanted it in perpetu, in perpetuity, you know, so that we have a lot of projects that were approved back in the early two thousands. That still haven't turned dirt and I think that was our intent.
If this, is there a time limit on this CUP at all?
Currently, there is not, but you absolutely can.
Okay.
Alright, anything else? Okay, thanks, Will. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? No? Okay, we're gonna open. Oh, she has something, yeah, you wanna say something?
Yeah, good evening, mayor, council. For your record, my name is Madison Leek and I'm here with Storit. Happy to answer any questions, but something I wanted to ask, if it is the council's pleasure, is if the five-year stipulation could only be tied to phase one. Which is the portion with the office. Phase two is gonna be developed according to market demand, so I wanna leave them a little flexibility there if possible. But I think the important thing is that the portion that's allowed, that's, um, including the office flex space will be developed within the five years.
Okay, I understand. So what about phase two? What is your anticipation on that? Or is that just entirely, it's gonna sit until?
They don't have a current timeline. They, their plan is to develop it according to market demand. I heard the question of demand earlier, so to give a really simple answer, I asked them, since they have the existing location right across the street there. How's it going? Is it busy? Is it full? And they said it's almost always at a hundred percent. And you know, they know the community, they're a good member, so they wouldn't be putting this here if they didn't anticipate it to develop, but they're anticipating it to develop. They don't have a timeline for phase two. Don't wanna crunch them too much if I don't have to. Phase one, fine with the stipulation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for her? Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna open up a public hearing. Uh, is there any comments from the public?
I did not have any submitted on the site, I'm mayor.
Okay, anybody wanna make comment on this? Come on up. Please state your name when you get here, even though most of us know it.
Tim Davis, probably a local property owner. Um, they're talking to west side. Is that an office they're talking about putting on the west side of the road? It's all on the east. Everything's over there. So not that vacant lot above, north of Westwood. When they, okay. That's what I was wondering if it was right there. Buckaroo's, nobody probably knows Buckaroo's, but. Okay, not that open lot there.
No.
Okay.
It's directly to the south and east of Mary's.
I just didn't know if they were gonna own that west side and have to extend a sewer down through there.
No.
That's all.
Okay, thank you. Alright, if nothing else, oh, come on. And please, Robert, state your name.
Robert Switzer, Chino Valley. I would just think there should be a stipulation if, for the five years, if they don't see a need. Or have the need to build further, to do phase two, what's gonna be done with that land? What would, you know. Build something else on it? Staff's stay empty? What would happen with phase two property?
Okay, thank, thank you. Any other ones? Alright, we're gonna close the public hearing. Will, could you come back up, please, and address Mr. Switzer's question, please?
Absolutely. So in regards to, uh, Mr. Switzer's question, if, say we, you know, five-year time limit to do phase one, but not phase two. Phase two doesn't develop, they essentially get the commercial light zoning that's underneath of it. They can do whatever is allowed within by right commercial light. So restaurants, uh, more offices, uh, it's kind of tucked back there, so there's not really a prime, um, visual component for that piece of land. Um, but yeah, anything that code allows within commercial light.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on that? How about over here? You do.
So if they're not gonna finish phase two, they can put anything they want on there?
As long as they come through the pro, uh, town process for review and development. So they're, they're here before council tonight to request for the conditional use permit from any storage. Code says that they need one for that. If they say they only conditional, so the conditional use permit goes into effect for and only phase one gets developed. This remaining portion in gray here. I don't know how the site would function at, for anything else, um. But yeah, I, I mean, they, they would be left with their existing entitlements as the land currently sits.
But what we're, what we're voting on is that whole piece of property. We're not only voting on phase one.
Correct.
We're phase, we're voting on the whole piece of property.
Yes, sir.
And we're voting that it's gonna be a mini storage.
Correct.
So how can you stand there and say they're gonna put something else there if phase two doesn't come about?
Bob, what he's saying is, is if they should decide to wanna put something else, they'd have to come back through again and resubmit to change it to something else. It would be zoned for many storages and nothing else unless they came and did a change. Isn't that what he's saying?
So the, the conditional use permit allows them to develop the land as the storage that's presented before you tonight. So i, they don't have to do that, though. I, if they wanted to, say, they do the conditional use permit. And then.
I apologize, Bob, I draw.
Throw some water on me.
So am I, Andrew, you look like you got.
No, I, I think the easy way to describe it, council member, mayor, is the underlying zoning never changes. The CUP adds an additional use that they can do. If they don't ever wanna build mini storage, they can build all the underlying zoning uses just by coming in and getting a site plan review and a building permit.
Correct.
So if for some reason phase one builds as a mini storage and phase two never builds, the underlying zoning hasn't been changed. They can always build under the CUP unless it's revoked and they can always build the underlying zoning, but. Those uses don't go away with conditional use permit. You're layering something else on top of it. Those uses don't go away with conditional use permit. You're layering something else on top of it. You're giving them a special permission with the CUP.
Thank you.
I was way wrong, sorry.
I'm guessing they would have to come back in and say, well, market demand does, not gonna do many storage back there, so we're gonna do something else that applies to CL zoning.
They, they would come in as staff, they would not have to come in as council, correct.
Gotcha, okay.
Alright, we screwed. Yeah, thank you for the caveat, Andrew.
Alright, anything else? Over there? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Will entertain a motion?
Mayor, can we close that public hearing?
Ma'am?
Can we close the public hearing? We didn't hear it, thank you though, sorry.
Didn't I? See?
Wasn't his flavor to do that.
Okay, I'm making a motion, approve conditional use permit. Twenty twenty-three dash zero three. With a five year stipulation for phase one. For Storit, Arizona.
Second.
Motion made in second and all in favor? Any opposed?
No.
One opposed, motion carries. Alright, item D, public hearing consideration, possible action to approve ordinance number two zero two three dash nine three three.
Good evening again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, uh, Will Denji, Assistant Development Services Director. So this one um, is a continuation. It went before council. Uh, previously, it was continued to discuss the utility connection or extensions for this project, for Red Cinder Estates. Uh, I'm gonna just talk briefly recap on where this project is, what the proposal is, and then I'm just gonna turn it over to Mark. So the request is a rezone from AR five to SR one to develop a subdivision of up to eighteen lots. Uh, the property is located at the southeast of the intersection of Red Cinder and North Road one east. Uh, it's approximately twenty-one acres in size. Surrounding area, um, you have a mix of AR five, CL, and then to the south, you have Perkinsville forty-four with that SR zero point one six. Uh, staff does uh, support the rezone to SR one, and the commission did as well. General plan, uh, twenty fourteen general plan land use map does call for this area to be medium density residential, two acres or less. For information, the twenty forty plan also supports a one acre and up in this area as well. So the planning commission forwarded to council recommendation of approval with the conditions of approval found in attachment A. And I am gonna go ahead and turn this over.
Did you bring A up before you go?
Absolutely. Go through all of this here real quick, there you go.
Um, we can finish staff presentation and bring him back up, cause he might answer your question. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, to change the slide?
Yeah, I think so. You guys done?
No, not yet, almost. Give me thirty more seconds.
Mark doesn't have any slides. One.
Possible connection to town water.
Not one word said.
Alignment of road three north. Okay. Let's hear it.
Alright. Take it away, Mark.
Mister Mayor, members of the council, pleasure to be before you. I'm Mark Holmes, your water advisor consultant. Um, on the July eleventh meeting, um, council uh, recommended that staff meet with the applicant, Red Cinder Estates, which we did. And we discussed several items, uh, looking at connecting the town water sewer, looking at an adjustment to their assured water supply. Looking at what the town will be required for off-site improvements and contributions. We also had a discussion on ingress and egress. Before we begin, I just wanted to go through, just as a quick refresher, talk about the water and sewer codes that exist today. Um, chapter fifty-one, it's point zero seven five, uh, section E. New subdivisions containing lots of less than one acre shall connect. So any and all that are less than one acre shall connect. Each lot to the town's water system, new subdivisions containing lots of one acre or greater, which are within three hundred feet. Within three hundred feet, the town's water system shall connect each lot to the town's water system. Um, next section F, private systems and wells shall not be constructed where the town's public water system is available at the property line of a lot. Or within three hundred feet of the property line of the subdivision. And then regarding sewer, uh, fifty-one point one five five A one, when a town sewer main is extended to within three hundred feet of the multifamily or non-residential property. The property owner shall connect to the sanitary sewer system within one hundred and twenty days, written notice by the town, uh, that the service is available. Section B, all, a subdivision containing lots greater than or equal to one acre may be permitted to install. Septic tank systems if the sanitary sewer is not available within three hundred feet of the subdivision. So I'm gonna go through three next maps and scenarios where the, the applicant and the town staff met. The first is looking at a waterline extension. Uh, the first uh, map here shows the Perkinsville forty-four. It's a conceptual uh, diagram. Don't get hooked on it. I don't think it's the final, but just wanna have it in place. Um, I will touch on it. But that exists uh, north of Perkinsville Road and adjacent to and east of Road one east, and that's right here. And then to the north, adjacent to the Perkinsville forty-four is the applicant's proposed uh, plan of eighteen units here to the north. The current water line exists north of Perkinsville Road on Road one east, and it, it terminates at this blue uh, square here. So the town will be responsible for the off-site extension of that water line, three hundred and thirty feet to the north, to that red triang- it's the red box. And then the applicant would then be responsible for all water line extensions along the perimeter of the property. And within the internal um, road structure there. Um, the town would be again responsible for three hundred uh, thirty feet. The applicant would be responsible for three thousand six hundred and eighty feet of water line extension. Regarding sewer, a little bit different, same map.
Can I interrupt you a second? Did you take one quick break?
We need a quick recess.
Yes, Mister Mayor?
Thank you.
If I allow that, you won't get mad at me for more slides?
Is it just a recess?
Yeah.
Just a real quick.
Just a quick recess then.
Just one second. I'm sorry.
Not a problem.
I was gonna do a deal. If I let him get off the hook, he'd let me have more slides.
That ain't gonna work.
No. It wasn't.
It's you, Mark. We were good. Things were on a roll.
I apologize. No worries, all good?
Yeah. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I apologize. Alright, sir, continue.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. We'll continue. Um, so the next conversation um, is about sewer, the sewer extension. Again, this is the same exact map with some slight variations. The current sewer exists on the blue circle on Perkinsville Road and the intersection of Road one east, on the, the green dot there. The town will be responsible for the off- off-site um, extension of one thousand and twenty feet to the north. To get the sewer line within the three hundred feet of that proposed subdivision. The applicant would then need to extend the sewer, again, on the boundary of the property and within the internal street network. That is uh, three thousand six hundred and eighty feet of sewer line that would have to be created. One additional note here is that um, this is right on the sewer basin boundary. So there would be a lift station required. That would then be required to lift the sewage back to, force main back to the main sewer line, which is located down at Perkinsville. So on the top of the map, you're gonna see that there is a proposed lift station right there. And lastly, it was uh, brought up in the council discussion about uh, exploring the opportunities of the Perkinsville uh, forty-four. Utilizing the existing sewer that's been in place there. Um, similarly, um, we looked at um, where the existing sewer um, exist. Within the Perkinsville forty-four, right here on that southern half of the eastern side of, of that Perkinsville forty-four property. The town will be responsible for extending the sewer up to the north of that red, uh, the red box. Um, and then the applicant would have to then make the sewer extension up through uh, the land there to a lift station. And throughout the entire subdivision and the exterior roadway. Um, however, with these, um, there are significant issues with doing this. Uh, number one, um, we don't know the current Perkinsville. Uh, forty-four future development timing. We don't know when they're gonna come back. We don't know that, that uh, timing very well. The town would also need to obtain a public utility easement or actually purchase property with that um, concept. Um, it's also not, um, it's not known if the Perkinsville forty-four sewer main is large enough. One of the main things is large enough to accommodate not only the Perkinsville forty-four. But the Red Cinder Estate development, sewage volume, and future connections to it. This would require a very expensive engineering study to actually do this and prevent, to understand the, the engineering concepts. And prevent what's called a sewer bottleneck, which could cause a number of problems. And just lastly, um, the fifty-one point zero five eight of the town code defines a water sewer main for the purpose of extension. As a main constructed from the town's existing point of connection to and along the frontage. Or boundary of the development with the capacity to serve additional developments. So hav- having evaluated this and looked at all of these uh, circumstances. We as staff don't believe it's a good idea to, to pursue this, this concept at this time. So these are the concepts we discussed. Now we're gonna talk about the cost assessment. So on the left-hand side of the sheet is the town's proposed costs. On the right is Red Cinder Estates' proposed costs. So, um, the town to extend both water and sewer would have to spend more than five hundred thousand dollars. For that uh, Road one east water and sewer line extension. And there's a cost here, little asterisks right here. These costs don't include the engineering, which is fifteen to twenty percent of that design work for the construction aspect. So it would be well, well north of five hundred thousand dollars um, for the, for the town to, to look at that extension. Now, the applicant would then have to also make adjustments on their assured water supply. Currently, they have um, a well. And a dry lot subdivision proposed with the Department of Water Resource and already have achieved a certificate for that. Connecting the town's water system, they would have to get a traditional assured water supply certificate. They would then have to go buy five thousand acre feet. If they bought it from the town, our current price is two hundred and fifty dollars per acre foot. Um, that's one point two five million dollars for five thousand acre feet. They have to have a hundred year assured water supply. Their end of water line extensions and sewer line extensions for that first um, and first and second concept. Is three thousand six hundred eighty feet for water, three hu- three thousand six hundred eighty feet for sewer, that's two point five million dollars. And the lift station is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. A grand total of four million dollars plus. Um, again, this does not include the engineering costs with that, which would be another fifteen to twenty percent. That gives a grand total per lot cost of two hun- more than two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, just to get the water and sewer there for eighteen lots. What they're proposing right now for a well is sixteen thousand per lot with eighteen uh, lots total. That's two hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Septic is eighteen lots at seven thousand for septic, that's a hundred and twenty-six thousand. Total of four hundred and fourteen thousand, or twenty-three thousand uh, per, per lot. Just wanna compare uh, the town's water buy-in fees along with um, what they're proposing with the, the well and septic. Right now, for the average residential dwelling in Chino Valley, it's um, forty-six hundred plus for a water buy-in fee. And the sewer buy-in is about just shy of seven thousand. Total eleven thousand five hundred ninety-two dollars. And the, the well and septic, what they're proposing is twenty-three thousand. So right now, based on their proposed development, they're paying more than double what the town would charge for that water and sewer uh, buy-in fee. What are the benefits? So number one, reclaim water benefit. Um, they will generate reclaimed water. If they were to connect to the town sewer, they would generate one point eight acre feet per year. That's a one-time value of forty-five thousand, just looking at monetizing the water value there. Yes, they are contributing to recharge the offer, but it's a very small value. The town water and sewer buy-ins, should they connect, that's, would be a total of two hundred and eight thousand plus. That begin to be a one-time value, but these fees are to expand the current water and sewer system to accommodate developments that buy in for those. And number three, um, town water and sewer monthly rates. On an annual basis, they would be generating just a little less than twenty thousand for all of their customers on annual basis. But these fees pay for the enterprise funds for operation and maintenance for the system that delivers the water and sewer to them. So with four million of new unanticipated costs, it's again, north of two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars per lot. How many lots would it be required to bring these costs into the margins for a well and septic? They would have to build a hundred and seventy-five lots to get this down into their margins for, to make this successful. Town's current water and sewer code, um, identify, as I previously read, uh, the requirements for lands both inside and outside that three hundred foot requirement. Both for water and sewer extensions. Again, a lot of that three hundred feet was based on the costs. The cost versus benefit for water and sewer extension for this development size is financially unfeasible, as was determined in the cost benefit analysis. Um, the cost benefit analysis uh, for water resources, again, currently not needed, would be an extra burden on top of all of these other fees. So the subdivision would need, again, to have a hundred and seventy-five lots to make this financially uh, pencil out. We did mention ingress and egress, so the current proposed two points of ingress and egress. I didn't go into detail, but um, currently they're looking at a Road one east for ingress and egress and then Red Cinder. But at the end of the day, Red, the Red Cinder Estates will coordinate with town staff on the desired ingress and egress as part of that plating phase. That will be all defined in there and coordinated with staff and the engineering. So per council direction, town staff and Red Cinder Estates met and conferred to discuss the opportunities and challenges for the water and sewer extensions. We did perform a cost benefit analysis. The analysis has noted that the, it's not economically feasible for the proposed eighteen lot subdivision to extend water and sewer at this time. The town is not currently also have the budget to extend water and sewer in its current budget. With that, I entertain any questions or comments you have for this portion. Will's gonna come back up and any questions you may have on what I presented.
Sixteen thousand a well, so that's forty dollars a foot. So, I mean, I figured most wells are gonna be about four hundred feet deep, plus or minus. Is that the growing industry rate is forty dollars a foot to drill a well?
Well and pump.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I interrupted.
I thought it was more like a hundred dollars a foot now.
Well, I will say, um, I can have the applicant is here, um, and also his water resource uh, manager. I think they're gonna get economy of scale when you mobilize a well drill or onsite and you're doing a whole number of wells, same with septic. There are economies of scale there. I would just, I'm supposing that, but if there's additional information that uh, Jim Holt or the applicant.
We'll get to him.
Okay.
Let's see, let's get you done and Will done, then we'll. Please, I'm sorry. But that was rude. I'm known to be rude, you know. So you, and your, your, uh, your, your, uh, different layouts for the price, if you could go back a few slides, you show uh, one, two, and three. No, go forward. No, with the prices. Okay, so you're showing the prices of the water and sewer. Okay, so the source of the water is not really a concern of mine. I don't care if they get it by well or if they get it by municipal water. It's the recharge, the collection, treatment and recharge to me, and I've heard the council say that seems to be a, a present thing for sustainable water. So what if we just did the sewer line and we didn't include the water?
That would be a council decision, but um, you know, the costs are right here. That's gonna be probably, you know, four hundred with the costs of extending the sewer line. That one thousand and twenty feet. Um, that would also include additional costs, which are not included that, an engineering cost.
Right, so it would be four hundred and fifty-eight minus a hundred and twelve. So we're looking at three forty-six plus additional. So we're looking at 346 plus additional lift cost or whatever.
Lift station as well.
Right, right. And you're, so you're, you're telling me it's just in the big scheme of sustainable water supply, getting, I thought it was 18 homes or 17 homes. Now I'm hearing 18, but I thought it was.
Up to 18, I think is what the, the concept is.
It's not worth it. We don't care about the 17-home collections and, that's what I'm hearing. It's like, hey, yes, it's a, it's a good thing to have, but we really don't need it. And, and I'm finding that to be a common trend in almost every development this council approves. And at what point do we start saying we need to start collecting? Because I can't think of one place where we've required it yet. And that's concerning. It's, I understand the rules and I'm all for the rules. And that's why I'm reluctant to vote for this because the council established the rules. I feel the councils and the government should follow its own rules. But at some point, we have to come up with a standard. And I know tonight's not the place to come up with it. But every project we approve, there's always an exception not to recharge, to collect. It's getting old and I don't blame you. And I don't necessarily blame all us, but we have to do something about it. It's getting old and that's why I hope that study session in the very near future about this comes forward.
Mayor. Mayor? Yeah, if I may address that. Mayor Council, so we are going to have that at our next study session to bring these, some options before you to try to mitigate these types of things happening. So staff is working behind the scenes right now to get that ready for you.
That's all I have. Thank you, Mark.
Sher, you got anything? Tom?
No.
No, Bob, Annie?
I got a lot, but not for Mark.
Not for Mark?
No.
I, I have a couple of questions for you, Mark. If we can scroll through your slide, go back to the front, please. Whoop, go one, the one where the rules are. See right here in 51.075E, it says new subdivision containing lots of one acre greater, which are in 300 feet of the town's water system shall connect the lot, town's water system. That's one. And then B says the sewer line is, I'm sorry, it's water line again. But see that 300 foot? It, it says main, one of them does, I'm sorry. Hey, there you go. Yeah, there it is from the main and the other one doesn't say main. So which one are we doing? Because if you go to the lot back where it shows Red Cinder and the Perkinsville 44, one of those maps you had. Right there is fine. I mean, our sewer is right there and there's lot butts against this one. So to me, that's within 300 feet. And I understand that's not a main there. But I, I think with Perkinsville 44, is there not something we can do? And I echo 100,000 times what he said about sewer. I don't care about water so much. We're going to use same amount of water, whether it's well or town water. But sewer, getting that sewer water back is very important to me. So is there not, is there not some way that we can talk with Perkinsville 44 to see if we can assist in putting in a larger line that will be capable of holding that? Or? That's my question.
Mr. Mayor, that's a great question. I think that, I don't know the dimension of, this is the problem, I think, with the current ordinance and the use of the word main. There are big mains. You want to, you want to go ahead and talk? You're the engineer.
I think. Sorry, I was getting there, but I think Mark was getting there. But there's another section of code that's not listed here that 50.075, I think, lists for the, when considering mains for the purposes of extensions, the town shall consider a main to be within a town road along the boundary of the subdivision for that 300 feet, to measure that 300 feet. So that's why staff does not consider going cross-country through private property.
But aren't these roads going to get dedicated to the town?
Right, but you're, you're not within 300 feet along the boundary of the subdivision. You're going through private property to connect to, for the purposes, there it is. It's 51058 defines water and sewer mains for the purposes of extension as a main constructed from the town's existing point of connection to and along the frontage or boundary of the development with the capacity to serve. This is not tour along the boundary. So that's why staff doesn't consider this for that 300-foot rule. Cause you're going as a crow flies here. So I'm just saying, physically, it's possible. You could, the other problem is where that red box is. It's five feet deep right now in an eight-inch line. So that would have to be redesigned. You'd have to acquire the private property going through. They'd probably lose a lot. So, but, but as engineers, we can make anything happen with enough money.
Or get an easement maybe?
Well.
If you did on the property line, maybe?
Yeah, you would probably pay the same price as the property for the easement because you're losing the use of that property. So.
Okay. Bob, you got anything?
I agree with you and I agree with John. We have to start doing something with the sewage.
Thanks, Mark.
And you said not for him.
We have invented in the past.
I have so many questions. I'll just wait for Will.
You want to wait for Will? Okay, you got anything for? Nothing else for Mark, is that correct? Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Will, you're up, bro.
Bro.
Sorry.
Watched too many of those YouTube videos.
Mr. Dingy, you're up.
Yes, sir.
Did you just snort?
Go, Annie.
All right, you ready?
Absolutely.
Get your microphone over.
All right, here goes. Can we go back to the map in aerial view? Doesn't matter what's showing what. Actually, I would like, ooh, go back one. There we go. Perfect. Road Three North. Let's talk about that. So I spent quite a bit of time down Red Cinder. So I take one east, hang a ride on one center. A, blind turn, right there, where the subject properties are supposed to be. And the natural flow of traffic exiting to south is Three North. Exiting to north is Four North. So Three North is not capable of fitting two car lengths. Any plans? Any idea of how we're going to fix that? Because they're not going to go down to Perkinsville to hit the roundabout when they can hit the light at three.
Sure. I unfortunately will defer to Frank.
Perfect. Well, and I still have ingress egress issues.
Do you want to? You have land use questions? And then maybe we can answer those first and then go to Frank?
Site built or manufactured?
Site built. And that's stipulated.
Frank?
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and council members. So I think the question is for Three North, were you saying it's not wide enough for two-way traffic now that it's a narrow road? Is that what you were, okay.
And people parking on the side of it. It's the natural flow when you're leaving that neighborhood to get out to the 89.
Right, I would agree.
So if we're adding more population there and no improvements to Three North, then we, I have an issue. I mean, Three North now is not great, you know?
Right. Neither's One East. So.
Exactly, exactly. And when I get my stop sign at Perkinsville, it'll be a little bit better, but.
Right.
Three North and Four North are the natural routes to leave Red Cinder. So. How, what are we going to do there?
Right.
Nothing.
Uh, well, we would, part of the traffic impact analysis, we could look at is see the impact on Three North and see what additional traffic that would include there. As long as it's proportional to the development, I don't think there's an issue with improvements. But I'm not sure if the, say it's up to 18 lots. So say we go with the number 18, that's about 180 trips per day. If you go off of 10 trips per day is how we design that for a single-family home. That includes deliveries and everything like that. So you look at the proportion of that with the, I'm sorry. Per house. Is, is what the Institute of Traffic Engineers deems. Apartments are about seven, single-family homes are about 10. So every home back there generates that same number. So you would probably look at the proportionality of the rest of Red Cinder as well to see what the impact is.
Okay, so let's talk ingress egress.
Okay.
Where are they proposing? The last I saw it, it was an entrance for one to a cul-de-sac and entrance to another to a cul-de-sac.
Yeah, go to the next slide.
Right. And these are, my understanding is these are still probably this one? Oh, okay. Are you wanting the slide for the cul-de-sacs?
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't know that we have that slide, Will, do we?
Ooh, we should. We need it. Oh, there it is down at the bottom. Okay.
Yes, this is another concept. So the, the layout has not been determined yet. That would be at the preliminary plat.
Right, which would be out of our scope at that point.
Andrew, any advice on that?
What about, oh, sorry, interrupting you, Annie.
Mr. Mayor, council member. The pre-plots within your scope, your discretion is at the zoning level. If it meets the requirements in your subdivision ordinance at the pre-plat, you don't have much discretion.
Okay, so let's talk safety. One way in, one way out on each of the cul-de-sacs. The houses are backed up against each other right in the middle. Here's a strictly hypothetical situation. Prescott Valley, there was an incident. Okay, they had to block off the street. In this case, if there's an incident and they have to block off the street, where are these homeowners getting out? If there's an accident, God forbid, on One East right there, how are they getting out?
Probably not. And I agree. I, yes, I'm not arguing with you. So.
And how is the fire department getting in?
That's why I don't like these cul-de-sacs.
See, now we are within my scope with safety, correct? Yes, okay.
So.
Taken me seven and a half years.
Yes, so I, I don't, if you're asking for my opinion on this as an engineer, I don't like this layout for the exact reasons that you stated.
These are my, my serious concerns. Three North, one way in, one way out, no fire department access on an already sketchy road.
Right.
That's where I stand, guys.
What about a package plant?
Who would operate it? That would be the question. So it's engineeringly feasible. I don't necessarily like them because the town would probably need to operate that. Because if you want to run it as an HOA, if the HOA goes under, town's going to have to run it anyway. If it's a commercial development, that's a little different. Like something where they're renting spaces, that goes under, no one's using it. But if it's residents like this, you really need to set it up to where the town would operate that with its certified operators. So it would be a temporary solution until we could develop the master plan and the infrastructure to get main lines there. And I believe that's how the code reads for package plants, that they're to be engineered and designed as a temporary solution.
Okay. Anything else for Frank?
So to get this, what we're looking at tonight, to get this approved, would only upgrade it into the next step for developmental services to come out and say, okay, you can't egress into Red Cinder because there's not enough room. You can't use Road One East, you can't use Road Three North. All that would come back to us under that.
Well, let me maybe ask it as a question that, as council, you could put stipulations on where you want the ingress and egress, I would think.
Those are all safety factors. Unless you're going to put a stoplight on Red Cinder, you will never get in and out of that subdivision the way it's planned. Never.
So.
That's the blind curve I was talking about.
Yeah, it's crazy. I'll defer to the attorney.
So you're talking about this curve right here?
Yep.
It goes right into the neighbor's driveway across the street.
Yeah.
Right. It's, yeah, this is.
Right into it.
This is not an ideally designed area.
With trees all around it, so you can't really see when you're coming around that curve anyhow. So you just put 180 vehicles.
Right. I'm not going, I'm not going to argue because it's.
This isn't my application.
No, it's, it's two entrances, so you would split it between the two entrances. But I think the point is the same, is why I was trying not to argue that.
No, we're just looking at zoning, am I right? We're just looking at the zoning. So this is, the, the preliminary plat might change six times. I agree with everything that's being said, but this is just the zoning right now is all we're talking about, changing it to SR1, right? Is that correct?
With the facts that we have.
Right.
Right. Okay, I just want to make sure I'm back on target.
Right, but I think this, yeah.
My concern, John, is that this is the only time that we have any ability to say anything about this, is in the rezon process.
Well, I agree with everything that's being said. I just want to make sure.
Okay, one, one point, Tom referred to the legal about something and you never got a chance to talk.
If you have off-site stipulations that you want to require as part of the rezoning, whether they're road improvement, whether they are entrance restrictions, particularly Red Cinder, it's been brought up. Those need to be stipulations to the, the ordinance that gets adopted. As those then get carried out into the subdivision ordinance, those restrictions would be in place with the zoning so that you wouldn't be stuck with just what the subdivision ordinance would produce. But you have to do them now if you want to get them. If you want to talk about road improvements that are off-site, we'll have to have a longer discussion about what is actually within your bounds as exactions for an 18-lot subdivision. As Frank was referring to before, that level of trip generation has limits on what it can, what you can ask for off-site.
Okay. Anything else for Frank?
Nothing.
Okay, Will, thank you, Frank. Did you have more? What? Does anybody have anything else for Will? No? Okay. So now, does anybody have any questions or would the applicant like to make a comment?
Please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jim Holt. I've been assisting the developer on this project. I had one issue that I wanted to raise, and that's with regards to the ordinance itself. The ordinance refers to this project twice in Section Two and in Section Three as a 16 to 17 one-acre lot subdivision. That's not correct. If we need the ordinance to describe the project correctly, I think that that needs to read up to 18 one-acre lots for the subdivision. So that's an issue that we would like to raise and ask your consideration for.
Okay. Any questions for him?
I said no. Go ahead, Annie.
I'd just like to speak to the property owner.
Yes, thank you.
My name's Alan Nell. Thank you for hearing us. I think too much attention has been placed on the old plan. We need to take a look at the revised plan that we submitted based on the, the concerns that this council and the planning commission had relative to ingress and egress and safety. So if you could switch it back to one of the sketches. All right, if you'll take a look at the upper portion. Based on the concerns that were presented, we actually developed a different site plan showing a different configuration and circulation and allowing for continued flow all the way through the development and got away from the two cul-de-sacs.
Where does it exit on the Red Cinder?
It exits on Red Cinder directly to the north, right at that property line of the parcel. It is directly.
At trees.
Right into this driveway and the trees are all there.
The property line, whatever's at the property line. It wouldn't be a building. It most likely. The property line, whatever's at the property line, it wouldn't be a building, it most likely trees or landscaping.
It's a driveway, I know the area.
Okay.
And the gentleman was here speaking at P and Z about the, uh, traffic and everything.
Microphone, sir.
The gentleman that owns that property was at P and Z, speaking about everything coming out to his driveway, and not being safe.
If the council would like, we could take that road and just go ninety degrees and have this U-shaped road, both coming out to Road One East.
Any other questions? Here comes Frank, you got an idea.
Sorry, I hate to butt in, but I'm not a huge fan of two entrances coming onto One East because of how they line up on One East with the houses across the street and everything like that. Coming into driveways to me is preferable than coming into someone's front door or windows, so, uh, we need to take that in consideration when we're looking at where these entrances are as well.
What happened with extending Three North?
Uh, that is still a possibility that we could look at, the right-of-way is not there, I know the property owner said something about the property was there, but I, I'm, I understand, she's sitting next to me, so, uh, but we looked at the legal description, and that described Road One East. I think we would need to verify the ability to get additional right-of-way on Three North in order to make improvements and extend Three North. Uh, it's, it's possible. But it would, uh, it would take some doing, right now, let me go back to the slide. Right now, this is considered undeveloped right-of-way for the extension of Three North. But we're a, we're a little narrow here, but I don't know that it is beyond the ability to work out, so, I, it it could happen, is what I'm trying to say, it would take some doing, but I, I don't know that it would maybe get into legal issues about who's allowed to ask for that, is that the best way to say that?
Yes.
Okay.
I understand.
Okay. But there is no right-of-way beyond, uh, the end of the subdivisions there for Three North.
And the existing portion of Three North between One East and eighty-nine, has there been any discussion about improving that with the increased traffic flow?
That goes back to the proportional to the number of cars per the in relation to the number of cars that are on it now, it's.
I mean, on it now is rough.
Yeah, it's like many roads in town, even Two North with all the traffic on Two North is only twenty feet wide in front of Chino Two. So, uh, Three North, I think, is between twenty and twenty-two feet wide, so, um.
Frank, we got that, uh, small RV.
Thanks, thank you. We got that smaller RV park there on, or on.
North side of Three North.
On the roadside of Three North, how many homes is that?
I don't have that answer off the top of my head, I'd have to look that up, so.
It's not many, ten, eight, ten.
Ten to fifteen tops, maybe.
Plus the house in the back.
And the property on the corners for sale.
So. Yeah, it's, it, I think the narrowness of the road is probably more the concern and some of the, probably the heavy growth of trees, there's some mature trees along there too, I think.
Lot of trees.
And everybody that lives off of Red Cinder has to come out to One East because it's a dead end. Everybody that lives off of Red Cinder, all those roads, they have to come out and exit on the One East.
Right.
There's no way out.
Right. And, and I don't see that changing for Red Cinder either because of the wash in the other direction, so, you're either going north. There's not, Red Cinder doesn't go all the way to the wash, there's some property that cuts it off.
I'm talking about the wash on that property, how did this new plan get around that wash?
I think this property's fairly flat, it flows to, it flows to the northeast.
That's the sign that says, don't feed the horses.
So. But, you know, if it was me, I'd go down to Perkinsville and use the roundabout, but I like roundabouts, so. Uh, my wife would use the signal at Three North before she would use the roundabout.
So.
No, you go.
Oh, I said with that, we're getting on that traffic on Perkinsville is a big issue too, especially when brown homes gets built.
Right, and it's in the plans when they complete their off-site improvements to have One East and Perkinsville as a four-way stop.
Can't wait for that.
It's bonded, it's just a matter of getting it constructed. Okay, thank you for letting me.
Thank you, Frank.
Hey, I'm not going nowhere. I don't understand, m- maybe you can help me, but is there no way to run and road down Three North and do a, a loop off of it?
Uh, one example.
Like you would extend Three North, but on, on this gentleman's property, and then just do a loop to service somehow?
And just have a one entrance?
Well, if you want, or maybe an emergency exit off, off on the Red Cinder?
Right, my recommendation is to always ha- try and have two entrances, if you can.
Well, you mean a full-time, well, then do a full-time one.
Yeah, I would, so the.
Like where Three North would go through, could he, is it?
Yeah, you could come up one of these property lines, maybe, and build Three North in there, uh, if.
I think we need here with the public.
If we met all the right-of-way requirements, so.
Make sure you get it on record.
I said, let's get the public's input, and then.
Anything else for the, uh?
I don't, I don't usually come up with good ideas.
Quick question before that goes.
I don't think so, you, does anybody else have anything for the?
The, uh, in this figure, the entrance egress, whatever you wanna call it, onto One East, is that offset from Adams, or does that run straight into Adams? Adams is a little bitty dirt road that runs.
Yeah, Adams is south, it's, it's down here, about where that red box is.
Okay.
That's.
Farther down than that?
Right, that's one reason we said this was a conceptual layout, cuz the actual entrance for Perkinsville forty-four lines up with Adams.
Down there, okay, alright, thank you.
Okay, anything else for applicant, or Frank, or Will? From anybody? Nope.
Um, it is my understanding that this property was purchased in twenty twenty-two, is that correct?
That I don't know.
Not twenty twenty-two, I must be mistaken.
No.
Early two thousand.
It was early two thousands, I think two thousand three, two thousand four.
Interesting.
Anything else? Thank you, sir.
May I add one other, there are.
Yes, sir.
Um, regarding the resolution, um, section two and three of the resolution, uh, the current printed resolution or typed resolution says sixteen to seventeen, uh, up to sixteen or seventeen lots, and the actual should be up to eighteen lots.
Okay.
And then one other item is that, in light of the way that we, the highly anticipated economic contraction that's anticipated, and with uh, increased interest rates at the time, um, the five-year limitation on the zoning, we would ask for at least ten years to give us the time to get through the economic conditions that we anticipate coming, and to be prepared to be able to in, to put the infrastructure in.
Okay, thank you, sir. Alright, so at this time, we're gonna open the public hearing. Does anybody comments?
I do not have any comments for this item, Mayor.
Okay, anybody would like to make comment? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna close the public hearing. And, uh, before we do a motion, I'd like to just have a little discussion, um. I don't know if we wanna make a motion on this now, or if we wanna table this to a study session where we can talk about it more, or if everybody's heard enough. Cuz there's a lot of lot going on here.
I, I think we could have a study session on the amount of money it costs for the sewage and water.
Think we got those numbers already, though?
Well, I mean, whether we're gonna agree with it or not.
Okay.
Unless you wanna do that now.
How about over here? Opinions?
Just the road really poses a concern, would, would it change at all if there were fewer lots, would it actually change the road issue?
Yeah, cuz you're talking about thirty-two cars there, right, Frank? Should be about thirty-two cars with eighteen lots.
I work off trips per day.
Trips per day, ten trips per day.
Ten trips per day, per, per lot.
Per lot.
Per lot, ten trips per day?
Hundred and eighty.
Is that five out, five in, or is that in and out, ten times?
Trash pickup, deliveries, school buses.
Talking about a hundred and eighty trips a day.
Yeah.
That's a lot.
Just out of that development, right?
Just out of that one.
And you're one of those roads that hold that.
But even if we had fewer trips, and there were fewer lots, we, no matter what, this piece of property, because of where it's situated, is always gonna have that road issue.
Unless they did Three North.
Right, unless we did, you know, that's what I'm saying, that, that road, it didn't really dawn on me until tonight, listening to everybody talk, that, that road really does the water's one issue, and I already have an issue, but I'll live with the rules on that, but the road poses a concern no matter what, because of the One East or Red Cinder, and that road on One Red Cinder, it's just a little tiny neighborhood road.
It's, it's a nice town road.
Yeah, but it, but it is, but it's a small road, and to have a lot of traffic coming down off of that, off of that corner.
Lovely people that lived down that road.
Just a little bit.
We, we would do our best to maintain the roads as best.
I'm not saying no condition to the road, I'm just talking about the, the qua, you know, the, what it is, it's a small residential road.
Right, for proportion, the Perkinsville forty-four development to the south generates a hundred and sixty-two times ten trips per day, and they have two entrances to the subdivision.
But you, we may not have seen it in the conceptual design, but are there any other designs that can work for this to meet all the traffic concerns that we haven't seen tonight?
I, you can design roads many ways, I'm not sure what you're looking for, it, traffic-wise, a hundred and eighty trips per day. I understand it sounds like a lot, but when you're talking roads that have a thousand vehicles per hour capacity on them, it's sometimes not as much proportionally, and that's why I'm saying.
I'm not arguing the roads, I'm not arguing the numbers, I'm just talking about where they're coming out, I'm, I'm strictly talking about where they're coming out. Adding two, you know, the two, you didn't like the two because of the egress, you know, the, the two, uh, cul-de-sacs, which would be easy if you just put a loop in there, but you didn't want them both coming out on One East.
Right, but one on One East, I think, would be.
Okay.
Okay.
And unless we put a condition of saying that, you know, maybe the developer will incur the cost of extending Road Three S- North, that's the only other place it can come out, unless we're gonna go in the back door of the, that Perkins forty-four project.
We, right, we could come out on One East, but again, then you're impeding the traffic on One East, which is a principal arterial for the town, and a detour route for Highway eighty-nine. So you're creating yet another intersection between Red Cinder and the southern intersection, so you got three intersections really close together. So you got everyone trying to pull out at the same time. And if, God forbid, there's an accident on Highway eighty-nine and you have to detour traffic, it really compounds the issue, yeah.
Close the public.
Don't come ago.
I just, I'm thinking there's too many safety variables and other things that we don't have the distinct knowledge of yet, that we could probably postpone this and meet on it, and, and figure out these things, so we can come in with a list that the, the person would like to do that. Does that fit, Mr. Attorney?
There are a couple different options, uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, you can continue it to a specific date, and then you don't have to re-advertise the public hearings. You can, uh, continue it indefinitely, then you, when you came back, whenever that was, you'd have to re-advertise it, um, the same way you did for this meeting, um, either one of those is available to you, um. If you change, if you require significant changes, oftentimes it needs to go back to P and Z, but that doesn't sound like what we're talking about here. Um, so either one, continue to a specific date or indefinitely, it just matters in terms of advertising cost.
Yeah, I'm just wondering about the, can we meet within, if we go to a specific date, like the second meeting in September, is there an opportunity for all of us to meet and discuss what we'd like to add to it between that date, within the legal?
Um, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, no, there is, the public hearing is the opportunity to have those discussions, so, in the public meeting, whether it's now or a continued version of this, is the appropriate time for that. If you wanna send it to a work session, we'll advertise it as a public hearing just like this one, uh, because it's a P and Z item, we don't wanna start doing P and Z public hearings in work sessions, that's not what the statute contemplates.
Okay.
I think there's too many cons to this project, so I make a motion to deny ordinance two zero two-three dash nine three three.
Second.
Alright, motion made in second, and to deny this motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Motion carries. Alright. Uh, public hearing consideration and possible action to approve ordinance two zero two-three nine thirty-four. Hi.
Hello, good evening for a third and final time tonight. What's my name? I'd have changed, Will Denji, Assistant Director here with the Town of Chino Valley. Uh, this requested rezon is for a fourteen-unit apartment complex, um, dubbed the Palomino Apartments. Uh, this item went before the Planning and Zoning Commission earlier this year, it did receive a, a recommendation of approval from the commission. The applicant is in attendance, so if there are any questions, questions specific to him, he is happy to answer them. So, um, just to give an overview, uh, this is, it's one point five acres in size containing two subject properties. They are located at the southeast of the intersection of Horizon and Palomino Road. To the north of the property, you have Alfonso's, Maisy's, McDonald's, to the east of the property, it's Circle K, Chase Bank, up in Smoke, and the remaining of that commercial complex, south you have Casa Grande, and then to the west, you have the Mannequin Apartments. The property is currently vacant land, um, but it does have a primary and a secondary address currently of four four three Palomino Road and three nine nine Palomino Road. Staff hasn't originally referred to the secondary address as well, however, there's some conflict with, um, M and M, I, M and M shares that same address, so there was, um, some internal discussion, so we're not even advertising based on the secondary address, it's just primarily of the four four three, and then the parcel numbers. So the requested rezon is from commercial light to multifamily. Now, if you look at the zoning map, you'll see that there is no multifamily zoning here, however, if you go and assess the actual uses of those commercial lands, you have seven properties that are currently utilized as multifamily in some capacity. You have five properties along the south here that are operating, um, or constructed as duplexes. You have a triplex down here in the southwest, um, off of Perkinsville, and then you, directly to the west of the proposed site, is the existing Mannequin Apartments, currently with fourteen units. So while the zoning around there does not ref- accurately reflect the uses currently being, um, conducted on those properties, staff supports this rezon to multifamily because it fits the character immediately around this area. In addition to this, the twenty fourteen general plan land use map calls for this area to be commercial multifamily, the request of multifamily is conforming to that. For reference, the twenty forty plan also promotes for multifamily in this area as it is designated as a horizontal mixed-use area. Um, it specifically denotes as the Uptown Center. Within the Uptown Center, there is an allowance for twenty-five percent of that landmass to be utilized as residential at eight dwelling units per acre. Uh, there was a question that came up during the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, hearing, to where, where does that lie within, um, currently. currently development entitled land, how many units are currently within that H M U? Staff did calculations and the H M U supports fifteen hundred dwelling units. Currently entitled is approximately eight hundred, currently constructed is approximately two hundred and fifty. So the proposal of fourteen apartment units not only meets the twenty fourteen plan, but would also meet the twenty forty plan as well. The overall development of this site, while this is a very conceptual plan. It is intended to promote dialogue.
That's fancy.
Um, if this is.
Well and septic? Wait, well and septic?
So if this is approved, the applicant does, will come back with an architect and with a civilor, um, to completely design this project per town code.
There's an existing well, right?
Correct.
And septic?
Yeah, I know where this is gonna go. Um, so what the applicant is proposing is two, two-story apartment buildings, one a six-unit, one an eight-unit. And, um, well and septic for the site, the current closest water and sewer is on the east side of the highway at Perkinsville and North One East. Uh, the applicant will be required to comply with all landscape development standards of lighting, drainage, paving, ingress, egress. All of the things that staff handles through the permit review session, um, since this is just a hard rezone request that will all be handled through staff. This would, item would not return back to council. So, um, as previously stated, this item did go before the Planning and Zoning Commission, it did receive a recommendation of approval to Town Council. So the recommendation before you this evening is to hold the public hearing. And then their recommendation was to approve with the associated stipulations. Which is a very short list.
Okay, any questions for Will?
Frank, but not for Will.
Okay, hang on, let me see over here. Question?
I'm gonna stay with Will for a minute, cause I attended that Planning and Zoning Commission meeting during that and during your opening speech that you just gave us. There is too much mission, uh, mention of the twenty forty plan, that is not an approved document, we should not be considering what's in it at all yet.
Understood.
I'm done, that's it.
Can I go now?
You can go now.
Okay, thank you. Bob, do you have something?
I have no questions for Will.
Okay, thank you, Annie?
You're welcome.
Okay, Frank? Please? Thank you.
Yes, sir, be happy to answer any questions.
So should, or I should say, when the town gets water or sewer down in that geographic area, right through there? Would that multi-housing facility be required to hook in to, even though they're on septic today? Would it be a requirement that no matter what, even if their septic wasn't failing, they would have to hook into the sewer?
Within a hundred and twenty days of the main being constructed and approved.
Okay.
It's a non-residential property, so that it's a mandatory connection when a main goes by.
So when, should our master water plant ever get, or when it gets done and it shows, hey, this is the progression? It, it's gonna go through there and we're gonna have a main here and over there and all that. And now that, uh, that facility, plus its neighbor to the west, they would all be required to hook in?
And the shopping complex.
Okay.
As well, and the Circle K and all the other properties, I'd love to get on sewer, yes.
Thank you.
So.
Frank, are they, are you requiring them to stub out? A dry stub for later?
No, because there's, it's not in our capital improvement plan, so it's not within ten years. So I think, but they would still have to pay for that connection when it comes by.
Anything over here for Frank?
No.
Annie? What are you thinking?
Can you go back to the conceptual drawing that they had?
I hope so, Will, is am I gonna go in the right way?
There it is.
Okay. Ingress, egress?
Yeah, ingress, egress to the west and to the north. Or what, where's north at?
Yeah, I want them to have two entrances.
One well. So the well is on, uh, four thirty, what is it, four thirty-three? Four thirty-three and three ninety-nine, uh, is the address?
Oh, the well's here on the corner?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's on four thirty-three.
Is this meant to be served, all of them by that one well?
Uh, for an example, the entire old Safeway complex, including McDonald's and all those shops, runs on one exempt well.
Okay, what about this property?
Yes, one exempt well. That's, thirty-five gallons a minute is a lot.
This septic area that's listed, this gentleman owned that piece of property, is there any confusion with neighborhood homeowners or anything about that septic area?
Uh, they would have to meet county requirements for the septic, if that's what you're asking. Uh, Will, I don't know if.
It's all his?
Yeah. The septic area is contained within, um, the two subject parcels.
Okay.
Anything else over here? For Will or Frank? Oh, no, Will, just Frank.
One handicap?
Over here?
Is that what I'm seeing?
Nope, thank you. Okay, any questions for the applicant or would the applicant like to make a statement? Any questions for the applicant over here?
No, sir.
How about over here?
Is there only one handicap in this apartment complex total? That's all I'm seeing, I think that's.
Where's the app?
Is that a handicap? Wait a minute. Yeah, that's what it says.
It's the furthest away. It'll be engineered.
They'll have to meet all the code requirements, whatever they're.
And he's right, I mean. Is that enough?
So, no questions for the applicant? Okay, we're open a public hearing, is there any comments?
Mayor, I do have a couple, and the first one was actually submitted to my office, so I'll read that out loud for the council and citizens. This is from Scott and Sharon Nance. Dear Mayor and council members, I would like to address several concerns regarding this request for rezoning from commercial light to multiple, multiple family residential. At the time of the planning and zoning hearing on August first, twenty twenty-three, this rezoning request was based on a hand-scribbled drawing of what the applicant hopes to build, it was not to scale and had no detailed information for backup. There were no drawings or renderings showing what the finished project would look like. Neither had he expended any effort or research for traffic studies, well and septic plans or requirements, and when questioned by the commission, did not even know if there were sidewalks in the surrounding area. The only information given was his verbal statements that he planned to look for it, look for it to look like the apartments across the street because he thinks they look nice. And that he had planned to rent at market rate, not low income. Discussions among the commissioners regarding traffic impact on the existing residential community zoned SR one were that the new residents would be able to walk to all the amenities to cover their daily needs and would not be driving toward the west through the residential area. And therefore, there would be no impact. To the west through the residential community is Memory Park, the library, the senior center, Del Rio Elementary and Heritage Middle Schools, the animal shelter and various other entities, this indicates there will definitely be a traffic impact on our neighborhood. The Uptown Center H M U, where this property is located, is intended to be predominantly non-residential with no more than twenty-five percent residential. No one, including Will Dingy or other staff, had the answer to what the current percentage of residential use is, what percent is already approved as future residential, and if this rezoning would put the H M U over the twenty-five percent threshold. I think that is something that should be known before this rezoning is even considered. Using an average occupancy of two point two people per residence rate used in the general plan, fourteen apart, fourteen apartments would be a density of thirty point eight people on one point five acre versus a surrounding community of two point two persons per acre. This is definitely not in conformance with the existing SR one community. If the new general plan that would be voted on in November, less than three months away, is approved, this project would be out of compliance for rezoning. Trying to push this rezoning request through without any plans, renderings, impact studies or investment in these by the applicant prior to the November vote, shows disrespect to all the people that worked so hard on the ju, new general plan and shows no regard to the voices of the current owners and residents of the surrounding SR one area, this is not responsible growth. Not only has no information rendering studies, et cetera, been provided or submitted, attention to legal details has also been negligent. The postcards received for both the neighborhood meeting and the P and Z and Town Council meetings lists the property as located at three ninety-nine West Palomino Road. The commissioner's agenda for the August first meeting lists the property location as four forty-three West Palomino Road. Which property is the rezoning actually being requested for? I would sincerely.
Ma'am, your time's up.
Almost had it.
You're on your own on this one, bud.
And then the, uh, next one that was actually submitted is for Virginia Foster.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Please do me a favor and pull that microphone down so the people can hear it home.
Would you mind setting it up to the map of the neighborhood?
Want that one or?
That one.
That one? Hang up them?
I live right there. Fifteen years ago, the Manneken Apartments were built. No zoning notice to the public. Over fifteen years ago, the duplexes were built. No zoning info to the public, the neighborhood, this is Luna Estates. My husband bought that property back in the seventies. You knew my husband?
Hmm.
Uh, this neighborhood has, is now full, there are no empty lots. And I have very dire concerns about more growth, being that close to the Manneken Apartments. Their septic overflowed one time, came that close to my property line. Yeah, I'm not a real happy camper. And I, your traffic guy, I, sorry, I have a big issue with him. Um, because the library, the, uh, senior center and so many other city facilities are down at the other end of the street. The park with all their activities. You know, uh, these streets are busy all the time. The transit company comes through there multiple times a day. Garbage trucks, this food delivery trucks to the senior centers and the food restaurants on the street. This is, this is a high-traffic area and we're, you're talking about adding more traffic? Has anybody walked down Palomino lately and seen the condition of the roads? Personally, I, I walk my dog every night. Palomino and Butterfield, as far as I'm concerned, people think they're speedways. They do not slow down for people, there's no sidewalks, there's no margins. And it's a danger to me to be out there walking the dog. But I need to get my exercise, I'm not a young person anymore. I, if you guys want to approve this, I really, really want you to put speed bumps in the private sector and separate the business stuff away from where the single family is because it's dangerous, it is very dangerous.
Ma'am, your time's up.
Yeah, and I can go on for another five, ten minutes.
Thank you. I'm sorry, your time is up, thank you.
Do you have any questions?
No, ma'am.
Mayor, that was the only submitted card that I had for this item.
No, you know other cards?
No other cards.
Okay, anybody else want to make comment? Alright, we're gonna close the public hearing. And we're to discussion or a motion? Discussion?
I hear what the, well, the lady said, she's a young lady. Uh, said, but it just seems like this is like, if there's gonna be apartments in this town, this is the, I can't think of a better place almost, I really can't. I don't like the septic part, but eventually the integrated water, master water plan will fix that, right? And then we'll be tied into that, but honestly, I mean, with the road issue, maybe speed bumps will work, but it ju, I can't think of a better place for an apartment building than this location.
Not right now.
No?
Yeah.
No comment? Okay, how about a motion?
I make a motion, we approve ordinance number two zero two-three dash nine three four.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Which one are you, aye or nay?
I am, I, yes, I am opposed, so it's a nay. It's a no vote for me.
No?
No.
Mayor, would you like to roll call?
Okay, we're gonna have to do a roll call.
Sure. Councilmember Shaker?
Nay.
Councilmember Perkins?
Nope.
Councilmember Phillips?
Aye.
Councilmember McCafferty?
Yes.
Councilmember Armstrong?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Gurneo?
Yes.
Mayor Miller?
Yes.
I have a four-three, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Sherry?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and seconded?
I guess.
Okay, we adjourn.
Thank you.